... updating public city schools, July 30th, 2018. Are we prepared for the roll call, please?
President.
President.
Mr. McManus?
Present.
Ms. Reiner?
Present.
Ms. Taylor?
Here.
Dr. Walker?
Present.
Ms. Wigany?
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we will have the superintendent's recommendations.
First item on the agenda tonight is an intergovernmental real property tax abatement agreement. This is an MOU that is being renewed. It was in place a while ago between the Dayton Board of Education and the City of Dayton, and the City is requesting that the Board renew that agreement for tax abatements. This also includes a subcommittee of Board members, Superintendent, and the Treasurer, who would also work with the tax abatement situation to make sure that something is gained back from the actual company. So, for example, we might ask for the company to pay for the science fair for five years or things like that. There's a menu of options that we generated, which is not necessarily limited, but it's ideas that are out there and available.
You've heard the recommendation. What's your pleasure?
I move.
You properly move. Is there second?
Second.
Properly.
No, I'm sorry.
All right.
Questions?
There are questions?
So, we're just voting on the tax abatement. I need to have that removed. Well, no, we're just voting on it, so it doesn't need to be removed and separated.
No, it's just single.
It's just single.
Yes, mhm. We did everything single because it's, there was no review session for these items. Mr. President, if I may. I'd like to refer to Board Member Alhamdani to address, he can articulate more precisely some of the, I believe, the issues around the concern on this agenda item, so I think it would be good if Mohammed addressed the group with some of the concerns that have been expressed.
You know, I'm wanting to give up the floor for that. I still have the floor, I thought.
I was going to give up the floor to Vice President over there. He's a TIF specialist.
But I still want the opportunity to speak.
Well, I, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. I mean, I thank you for putting this agreement together with the City. Was this, I believe this was worked out with our legal department and their legal department. Thank you to both of you. But I think it still stands that we're currently gaining nothing from these properties, especially the TIF properties. Right now, we're getting zero dollars from them, and it's unfortunate that it's been that way for a few years, that we're getting zero dollars from them. So, 25% I think is a good compensation for us, and hopefully it'll bring some business. I think one of the businesses that will benefit the most from this is that big development of a grocery store on the west side of Dayton. They could benefit a whole lot from this abatement project, so hopefully you guys will consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice, did you have, did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. President, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. And could we get just a little bit of, and perhaps Counsel or Superintendent, with the President's permission, of course, could we get a little bit of a walkthrough in terms of the logistical differences, you know, if we are approving abatements since we have done in the past under previous boards? Will the, will the process look exactly the same? What will be some of the differences? What can we expect as the governing body of the school district, just so we can be best prepared when that situation arises for our consideration? Thank you, Mr. President.
I believe the reason for the memorandum goes back to, this is a renewal of a memorandum, and Attorney Bradshaw, if I say something that needs to be added to or corrected, please do so. When we met with City Manager Dikstein, Treasurer Rahah, and Ms. Reinhart and I were in the meeting together for that particular conversation at that time, and when we had the conversation with her, it's just so that there aren't delays in being able to negotiate with companies. And apparently, several years ago, there was a, there was a similar memorandum of agreement with the City and the School Board, and that allowed the City to move forward. What, what happens in addition to this is that subcommittee to review it beforehand so that we can make sure that the, that the school district, while not receiving any kind of compensation from something else, that we get something back in return. For example, the new hotel that's going in, any of our consultants that we, that we bring in that need an overnight stay, well, we will get a discounted rate when we pay for their room in the hotel. Those are the kinds of things that we would negotiate with the companies that come in. So, I think it's just a matter of expediency, and the, the experience board members who were seated when the other memorandum was in place may be able to articulate that a little better than I.
If I may, I would like to speak to that. You're right, Dr. Lally, in the past, with the TIFs, we've worked with the City with properties as well as with their developments, providing abatements, knowing that it was more long-term in terms of the impact on DPS. But we were looking at the overall impact of the City, growing its economy, so that as the City strengthened its financial foundation, it would also finance, support the Dayton Public Schools. And so, we were affirmative around that, but with this, I would want us to make sure that, that in the future, that, I'm not opposed to it, however, but in the future, if we are updated, just to give us a heads-up in terms of what's going on and to, and if there's any variations, that would be helpful if we would be, have privy to that. But otherwise, like in the past, I supported the abatements, and, and will continue to do that. Now, I can say that I know of four agreements that we have now that Dayton Public Schools are receiving support from. I think that with the hotel that's at the corner of, on Water Street.
Water Street.
We, we have a relationship there with the ownership there, where they are providing, where they've committed to mentorships and, and as Dr. Lally mentioned, providing rooms for our consultants coming in, those kinds of things. And so, each one of those abatements have those kinds of, of support as in lieu of the real dollars coming into the district immediately, but in terms of looking to the long-term.
Mr. President, if you look at Article III, the compensation payments are what Board Member Alhamdani was referring to. This requires that the property owners have to remit annual compensation to DPS in the amount of 25% of the real property taxes that would have been charged and payable against the building improvements, had there been no commercial CRA exemption. So, as opposed to getting nothing, this is allowing us to get the 25% at least. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, it's my understanding, too, if the property falls outside of CRA or designated TIF and CRA, it would still come to the Board, and those would still have to be voted on by us, and those are, so the CRA and TIF exemptions are only for certain regions, and they're very small regions around town. So, if it falls out that, outside of these two, these exemptions, then they would come back to us anyways.
Do we have other, other issues, other questions regarding?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Board Member Taylor?
Okay. I have a couple of concerns about this. First of all, I have no idea why we're getting into a 10-year agreement. I think that that's going way beyond this Board, and it's going way beyond the times of the City right now. I think that we would be irresponsible to vote, to vote on this for 10 years, forcing future Board members to hold into this contract, and we don't even know what the lay of the land is going to be in 10 years. I think that locking it down to three, I think, still offers the same to the City and keeps everything the same, except for the fact that I don't think that we should be irresponsible in locking another Board into this agreement. Number two, my second issue is that I did not see anything in the agreement that talked about the School Board actually having the opportunity, or the Superintendent, to sit down with these companies and negotiate. The only reason we received the types of gifts that we received from the other companies, that was because the Boards sat down and negotiated that. That was not negotiated by the City. That was the Board that negotiated. So, I think that there needs to be something in here that states that the Board will have ample time to sit down with the companies to negotiate what in exchange these companies can give us to help support Dayton Public Schools in the event that they receive the TIF. And I don't see that being addressed at all. As a matter of fact, I get the feeling that basically it's saying, "Well, you guys just aren't involved in this anymore for 10 years," that it's just something that the City's going to handle. And so, that's my, my second issue. My third issue is that I think that there's a real problem with us giving TIFs to any residential property for downtown Dayton. The residential properties in downtown Dayton are selling like hotcakes, and I don't think that any company needs to have a TIF to build more housing downtown. I think that the market alone, the market alone, needs to dictate that and take care of that situation. I have people in my neighborhood who are having an extremely difficult time paying their, their taxes, their property taxes, and for me to tell them that I'm voting to, you know, give TIFs that I don't need to give for residential property in the downtown area, I, I think that's ludicrous to, to even put the Board in that position. And then, talk about turning around, going after a levy? Are we going after a levy in the next 10 years? Because this gives an open door to any residential property in the downtown area, and so, it's my understanding that the Board's probably going to want to go for a levy within the next 10 years. And so, that's another reason why I have a difficult time putting it, this at a 10-year agreement, when we're probably going to be asking the voters, the homeowners that have been in the City for a long time, to, to come up with more money. But then, that's okay, because people who are buying new houses downtown get a discount because they're not paying the taxes. So, that's, that's my, those are my requests. These requests don't just come from me, they are coming from people who are talking to me. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Board Member Taylor, and certainly you have every right to express your view. However, we are a Board of seven, and are there any concerns, other concerns this evening regarding this tax abatement? We do have a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, if I could. I, why didn't the Board discuss this? Why, why wasn't it brought before us for a discussion? Mr. President?
It, the, this item was on our Board docket since, since Friday.
We haven't had a meeting since Friday?
No, we haven't.
So, we haven't had an opportunity to even sit down and talk about, and talk about the repercussions of this, or to talk about how, how folks are feeling about it.
And you're not allowing us to cement one.
Or, or to even maybe talk about whether or not we need to take something different back, to see whether or not that could be worked out. I mean, you know, I just, it's very uncomfortable to walk in the door, and this is the first time that I've seen you people since this has been on the agenda. And so, are you telling me then to find out what's going on? I have to start getting on the phone and calling different people to find out, when it's my understanding, that's what Board meetings are for, is for us to find out what's going on, that we shouldn't be doing telephone calls per each Board member. That, that's, that's not the way Boards meet. So, my question to you is, when you said, "Well, there are seven people on the Board," there are, but this seven group has not sat in a room together and discussed this issue, which happens quite often.
Thank you, Board Member Taylor. However, as you well know, we have concerns, when we have concerns, as a Board member, you have every right to ask questions prior to this meeting, if you need information or further information. We share that every time we meet, that we have opportunity to ask questions, and many of us do that. So, I would, I would recommend that you take advantage of that opportunity to ask questions and get further information prior to the meeting, not that we don't discuss.
That's why I come to the meeting, sir, is to find out. Since you addressed this to me.
Yes.
I feel that I can answer that. That's why, that's why I come to the meeting, and, and it's my understanding that other Board members have been asking questions, and they're not getting their questions answered either. And, and there are several Board members who are feeling like they're kind of just being rushed through things, that there's just a couple Board members that are making decisions and bringing them to the table, and then basically saying, "Well, everybody needs to vote on this so that we can be a unit of one." To me, a unit of one would sit down beforehand and have conversation about these items, instead of being put in a position where we're sitting in front of a camera with the microphone in front of us, asking questions. So, if the questions are being asked in a public meeting, and you're uncomfortable with that, well, I don't know what to tell you, because we're a public Board, and our business is supposed to be handled in the public.
Thank you very much. Board Member Alhamdani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this, this is the first time this has been on the agenda, so, and, right, none of us have discussed this before, because if we all get together, it is a public meeting. So, that's part of it, and today is the opportunity to ask questions and address it. So, I mean, I don't feel frustrated by it if we have a Superintendent here in our legal department, and so, if there are certain questions that need to be asked, I think, I mean, we don't need somebody here. Sure. Sure. And if you have certain questions that can be addressed, I'm sure we can go back, but I, I feel confident our legal department, our Superintendent, are knowledgeable enough to answer those questions.
So, do you feel comfortable enough for someone to explain to us how we're going to be coming to the table, to talk with these companies, to find out how they're going to work with us?
I do.
Do you see a paragraph in here that addresses that?
The Superintendent discussed the formation of a committee to work with the City, so she already.
But that's not even in the contract, is it?
I understand that, but Superintendent can address that issue, I think.
When we, when we met to talk about the memorandum being renewed, it was requested that we have three Board members and Treasurer and myself serve on a team with the City to have conversations about that, and there was a, a menu of options that we took a look at and reviewed, knowing that that wasn't inclusive of everything that we might want to do with the groups. So, that was the point of trying to do that. We did not have it, we don't have it written in, in the memorandum, but the City Manager requested that we form that subcommittee, and since that has been requested, there's also been, been a request that I've turned over to, to Sharice, to schedule a meeting to give times for whenever that team is ready to meet with the City about some pending
Ms. Bradshaw, can you give us, or at least kind of make an attempt to clarify some, some of the issues in terms of the contract and what advantage it is for the City that helped clarify some of Ms. Taylor's, perhaps, unreadiness?
Good evening, Board Members. So, I'll, I'll do my best to try to decipher what exactly the questions are. The contract is very basic in nature. As Dr. Lally stated earlier, we've done one of these before with the City. If I'm hearing correctly, I think Ms. Taylor's concerned are some things that are not in this agreement, some sort of, in the mutual understandings that our Superintendent and the City Manager have come to in terms of process. In, you know, if, if the contract is intended to include all of those things, that would be something substantially different than what this Board has done in the past, so that would be sort of a deviation from the process that we've used before. But certainly, if the Board felt that that was necessary, we could take that back. And the other concern I heard was about term. The 10-year agreement is something also that this Board has done previously. Oftentimes, the Board approves contracts anywhere from, you know, a semester to a year, three, five, 10 years. It's allowable to do any of that. Because this doesn't require spending, a 10-year agreement is allowable. Oftentimes, if the Board is entering into a contract that is an expenditure from a general fund, I'll recommend a term of five years or less, but it is legal to do so. You know, the wisdom behind it, of course, is at your discretion.
Thank you very much. Board Member Alhamdani?
Mr. President, thank you. And I believe there is an amendment clause in here that allows future Boards to amend this agreement if they choose to do so, correct?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, if I may?
Sure.
Thank you. Attorney Bradshaw, this is a renewal of a previous MOU. Are there any significant differences from the previous one and this one? And if so, would you mind going over those, please?
Oh, Board Member Reiner, you're asking me that very quickly. Based on my memory, this is substantially similar, similar than, you know, as it relates to previous agreements. If I'm being 100% thorough, I would ask for a little time to pull the previous agreements and do a side-by-side analysis and give you a breakdown.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, Board Member.
Attorney Bradshaw, can you speak to, on the, the issue that Board Member Taylor brings up with regard to real estate? I believe there's a, on the TIF exemption, is, can you clarify with, with me that I'm buying a new property downtown? I'm exempt from any property taxes, and just give me a little bit of information around that, so.
And I'm, I'm looking over at Board Member Alhamdani, who probably knows a little bit more than I do as it relates to that. You know, this exemption, from what I understand, is the improvements on commercial property.
Right.
I'm telling you, I think John McManus knows more about TIF than I do.
Yeah, so this agreement, as I read it, and as we've drafted with the City, is as it relates to real property improvements on commercial real estate.
Yeah.
Commercial real estate.
Commercial real estate.
And I have to, I mean, I want to, you know, I'm going out on a limb here, a little bit on the City's behalf, in understanding that our community, our City of Dayton, and our, our leaders certainly understand the impact of quality public education within Dayton Public Schools, and that they have the best interest of the school district at hand. They have to, because our school district is part of the success of the community. I think that these incentives have been created so that we can incentivize people to move downtown and, and stay downtown, and businesses to come downtown. And we are in the midst of a revitalization, and that this MOU is needed to continue with that revitalization. And you are looking at a person, my property taxes alone are over $30,000 a year. I gladly pay my property taxes, but I would also gladly give incentive to other businesses to come to town, because it also brings revenue and brings positive impact to our community. I think that it's important as Board members that we have the opportunity to have updates so that we understand the impact of the opportunity for our students and for our, 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 our system. And I think that that is our responsibility as Board members, whether we serve through our Business Advisory Committee, whether we serve through the Finance Committee, on whatever subcommittee that we serve, that we make sure that we are taking advantage of every opportunity that this memorandum of understanding presents for our community. And that is where we can be proactive in making sure that our students, our community, are getting all the advantages that this, this document presents. So, that's, you know, and it, you know, there, and I think that, again, I have to go back to understanding that our City leadership, our government, our City Manager ultimately wants what's best for Dayton Public Schools, because as, let's say, so goes Dayton Public Schools, so goes our City, so goes our entire region. We are a vital, important part of the success of this community, and I have to think they have our best interest at mind, so, thank you.
Board Member McManus?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, and Counsel, if you would, too, as well. So, how it worked in the past, Company X comes to the Board and says, "We would like to establish a business or an expansion within the Dayton City School District, so we are requesting the tax abatement. Here's what we can give you in return that would benefit your students." The Board, the, the entire Board then votes on the agreement, and it becomes effective, usually in conjunction with a similar action from the Dayton City Commission. This particular document has some provisions related to consent, in terms of consenting to the, to the City's actions. So, my question is, is that process that has been in the past, at least since my service on the Board, does that same process still stand? Does the full vote come before the entire Board? Or is the subcommittee that is to be established, as I'm hearing here, is that subcommittee to, in essence, not replace the full Board, but will that subcommittee serve as the Board's voice, and then the full vote not come before the full Board? Is that, is that what I'm seeing here?
I'll do my best to answer the question in terms of the pieces that I know, and then perhaps Dr. Lally can fill in the gaps. So, the way I understand this legal document is that all the Board is waiving is their, is the notice requirement. You know, that we be notified of certain things. The process, from my understanding, again, from the legal side, is still going to be the same. The previous agreement that the Board had that looked substantially similar to this, you cited the agreement that we entered into with the hotel, the other entity that we have an agreement with is the steam plant building, when the Board discussed that, and, you know, we wouldn't have gotten tax revenue from those improvements. However, through those discussions via what was essentially a subcommittee, Steam Plant agreed to host two Dayton Public Schools events per year without charge. So, you know, again, there's going to be gaps in your question, Mr. McManus, I apologize, but from the legal standpoint, we're waiving our notice requirement that the statute provides for, but we are still engaging in these conversations wherein these companies can enrich the district in different ways.
And I'd also like to, if I may, Mr. President.
Madam Superintendent, I'm sorry. That's okay. I apologize, ma'am. My, my question remains, can this, can the full Board still expect to discuss with whoever is offering these deals in that room right over there? Can the full Board still expect to have those conversations?
Well, it wouldn't be an executive session. I guess this doesn't involve the purchase or sale.
So, that's a change? Okay.
Is it?
I specifically recall the Board in executive session, meeting regarding specific provisions on these types of agreements in the past.
That's different from my recollection, but okay.
What I want to know, is the full Board going to be voting on these agreements in the future, yes or no?
I don't believe so, unless they exceed the statutory percentage that's allowable from an abatement amount standpoint.
So, is that a change from previous practice, yes or no?
I want to say it depends on what the substance of the agreement would say.
Okay.
I think based on the most recent ones that the Board has entered into, again, it's been a number of years, but the process would be different under this compared to the most recent ones we've done.
So, if we were entering into a similar agreement, the exact same agreement as we did with Car- did with CareSource, let's say Care, let's rewind. Let's rewind and say, under the CareSource agreement, if this document was governing the process, would there be a substantial difference in the process?
I'm sorry, Mr. McManus, the CareSource exchange was a sale of property.
Okay, all right. And let's say the steam plant, or the hotel.
Mm-hmm. I do think the process would be different than what we did with the steam plant agreement, yes.
Okay, and how would the process be different?
The board would not be voting on the final contract, is my understanding, because we are waiving your notice requirement.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Superintendent Lally?
I just wanted to just make a comment that this pertains only to the community reinvestment areas and only to those commercial properties that would be within that area. I just wanted to reiterate something that was said earlier for the board. And as a TIF agreement, the, it only applies to those areas.
Yes, Board Member Taylor?
I appreciate the information, the questions that you asked, Board Member McManus, because I think that demonstrates that what this contract does, basically, is it takes out of the hands of the school board the agreements, or any kind of negotiations, or any kind of bridge-building with these new companies. It takes our face off of it, it takes us out of it, and allows the city, basically, to do what they want. And the city does not know what we need from these companies. We know that. And I think that if you start taking Dayton Public Schools Board and dividing them all up into being able to make their own decisions in small groups for the whole board, then you've really watered down your board. And you've taken out a lot of, also a lot of ability to bring all seven people with their knowledge and their experience and their relationships with the public. You're taking away their responsibility in terms of being able to use that in their job as a board member. And I'm going to be honest, the answers that I've gotten from the attorney on this, I'm kind of really surprised. I would think that any attorney would recommend to us that it would be to our advantage to have everything in this contract that DPS needs, which is for us to be able to sit down with each one of these companies and build our relationship with them in terms of what we're asking them for in return for the TIF. And we did that in the past, it worked very, very well. The city might have been a little upset because maybe it wasn't exactly on their time schedule, or because they felt that somebody else had to be ended up getting involved. But that's our right as a school district, to be able to sit down and talk to these companies, and to build our relationships with them, and to let them partnership with us, and share with us what they can give us, because they need the TIF, but there's other things they can do for us in exchange for that. So I'm, I just have a real hard time just giving that away to the city and letting them have, basically, my vote on the board in terms of this issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. Board Member McManus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly appreciate the need for efficiency here, and economic development certainly, you know, requires efficiency in terms of agreements. And so I, you know, while I'm certainly, you know, comfortable with the provisions of this deal, I'm going to say this one time. If there is a document of this importance in front of this board, I will receive a phone call. This is an enormous responsibility placed upon the members of this board, and anytime we're asked to waive taxes, that is a decision that weighs upon the seven of us tremendously. I do not want to be surprised like this again. And I'm going to say that one time.
Are there any other concerns this evening regarding the tax abatement agreement? Hearing none, are we prepared to vote? Yes.
Mr. Alham Dani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
No.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gani?
Yes.
Seven, six yeses, one no.
Thank you, motion carries.
Next resolution is substitute custodial pay. Inasmuch as the Board of Education of Dayton City Schools is interested in attracting high-quality staff, therefore be it resolved that all current and new substitute custodians be paid at a rate of $10 per hour. I recommend the approval of a substitute custodial pay resolution.
Is there a second?
Some moved.
And properly moved, second? Any question? Question?
This is, how low do we pay them right now? I'm sorry, I just wanted to know that.
It's $8 an hour.
Wow, wow. How do people live off of that? Yeah.
All right, are we prepared to vote? Roll call, please.
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alham Dani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gani?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you, motion carries.
Next recommendation is, I recommend the approval of the abolishment of the Dayton Board of Education Office Confidential Secretary position.
There's a second?
Some moved.
Properly moved, and second?
Second.
Properly moved, and second? Any question on the motion? Hearing none, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alham Dani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gani?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you, motion carries.
I'd like to recommend the approval of the Allman Group Resolution. The Dayton City School District Board of Education had an option for a two-year contract with the Allman Group, as outlined in a February 21st contract. I'm recommending that we begin that first year of that contract, and part of the reason for that is that we are losing our PR director in October, and I want to avoid any kind of gap until we can get that department and structure in place.
Is there a second?
Some moved.
And properly moved, is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved, and second? Are there any questions on the motion?
Yes, sir, I have questions.
Questions? Board Member Taylor?
I am, what are they going to do?
They actually will, at this point, I would request that they help us with some of the enrollment issues that we're facing, and try to get an enrollment campaign moving forward. But as we start to restructure the work that we're trying to do in the PR department, we would see what role they would play if we continue working with them. But the first thing I'd like for them to do is help us with the enrollment issues in between now and the October date.
My suggestion, I, the things that I read that they would do, I think that we really need to do a mailing, and it needs to be concentrated to certain schools, and what those schools offer, since we're making such major changes this year in a positive way for our school district. I think that we need to be boasting about those to the people who live in those neighborhoods. The Baltimore boards, you know, people see those, they hear the radio announcements and the TV, but actually, I think that we could get more bang for our bucks by doing individual, personal mailings that are divided up. And since we're hiring a company, you know, who's experienced in these types of things, I would think that they would then be able to have the means to divide our district in a way that we can focus. And, you know, my suggestion would be, okay, so Meadowdale is now going to be a new school. And so what can we tell those folks that are going to go to Meadowdale, and the ones that we want to go to Meadowdale, that Meadowdale is going to offer them? How is it going to be different from what it was before? And I think that direct mailing of something very simple with very little pictures on it, but real good information, I think would, will sell more than a billboard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alham Dani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gani?
Yes.
Six yeses, one no.
Thank you, motion carries.
I'd like to recommend the approval of the DEA after July 10th HR agenda. These are personnel who have resigned after the July 10th date.
Some moved.
And properly moved, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any question on the motion? No questions, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes. I'm sorry, no. Let me change my vote to no, I apologize.
Okay. Mr. Alham Dani?
No.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Ms. Reiner?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
No.
Dr. Walker?
No.
Ms. Wick Gani?
No.
Seven nos.
Thank you.
I'd like to recommend the approval of the Human Resources Report. These include new hires and resignations that were, resignations that were separations of employment.
That's a move.
And properly moved, is there a second?
Second.
And properly moved, and second? Are there any questions? Hearing none, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alham Dani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gani?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Motion carries, thank you.
Lastly, I'd like to recommend the approval of the contracts that are listed on the board agenda. We have one with the city of Dayton for traffic management following convocation. We are closing the street down for about an hour so that we can walk from the convention center to Ludlow for the convocation cookout. And then we have contracted services to provide human resources consulting management for the next two years for our HR department and the work that we're doing there. We also have a memorandum of understanding to work with the University of Dayton, and there is no cost to us for this. This is the loan of two people from the University of Dayton, one being Rob Durkle, to work with our high school counselors and middle and high school students, and continue the support in the work of the Trio Program from Sinclair, and Wright State's program, and UD's program, in order to move more students into the college track and make sure that they're on track to graduate and move into college and/or career. So we're grateful for that partnership opportunity with the University of Dayton. And then the last one is the YSOU, the Y, the WYSO contract, that is for our students that are at opponents. And we would like to ask for the board approval of those four contracts, memorandums.
Thank you. Some moved. Is there a second?
Second.
And properly moved, and second? Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alham Dani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gani?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you very much, Superintendent. At this time, we will have our treasurer's recommendations.
I would like to recommend the following items for your approval. A, purchase requisitions, and B, Zenin Now certificates.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And properly moved, and second? Any question on the motion?
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
Treasurer Abrahah, could you speak to item number three under purchase requisitions for the modular classroom facilities at Kaiser?
Okay, Sheila?
Thank you. Superintendent Lally, we've talked a little bit about this. The needs at Kaiser are great. There's a great deal of interest in Kaiser. Could you speak to the need for the modular classrooms at Kaiser and what the long-term plan is for the building?
We actually are out of space at Kaiser, so we've closed enrollment there, which is not a popular thing to do at this point in the year for the neighborhood there. We were going to initially move the modulators from Valerie to Kaiser to help support the need for additional preschool spots, as well as additional space in the building. And when we cost out the difference between new modulators and the old modulators, which are well over the lifespan of a modular unit, it seemed more reasonable to actually purchase the new modular units for a few dollars more, and not a few dollars more, but within a price range that was acceptable. And what the plan is for the building at this point in time is to continue to try and have three units of every grade level at the capacity. So if I'm a first grade, I'm at about 22 students. If I'm at an intermediate, I'm trying to be at about 25 and not more than that. And we may have four of some classes there at Kaiser. We also have a very large immigrant population there, so we have ESL services that are, need to have space, as well as the phonics program, as well as the reading intervention program. So at long term, they would be used for classrooms for intermediate-age students. We would not put younger students in those classrooms, but the older students would be in those classrooms. And we would hopefully add, be able to add that extra preschool there, because that's where we have quite a bit of demand for preschool, is that part of the community.
So I understand, you know, these are not the ideal, these are heated and air-conditioned, and the students have the facilities that they need, but it's obviously not the best solution for these children. What is the long-term plan for Kaiser and the excitement that communities have going to that school, and what we would do to accommodate the children beyond the modular spaced units?
The only option that we would have for extra space, which I'm not recommending at this point in time, as the building continues to, if it continues to grow as it has, would be that we would need to look at relocation of the Challenger Center. And the Challenger Center has, through the direction and the support of Bonnie Porter and this Board of Education, it's really grown and developed into something that we're very proud of, that we use every day. So that would be the only space that would be available, unless there was an addition of some sort added, which I would not recommend because of cost for the board at this time. But that would be the only thing that we could do in the long term, is to find a high-quality location for the Challenger Center. And have those classrooms available.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Question?
I'm sorry, I don't have a question, but just a quick statement that I really like hearing, and these are the kinds of things that I feel that we're hearing more of, is that we compare costs. Superintendent said we looked at the older ones to see if they could be refurbished and brought over, but that it was just, we can have even better and nicer for basically the same cost. I just really like hearing those things, and I hear that a lot with this administration.
Mr. President, if I may?
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
I think also Board Member Reinhart and Superintendent Lali, I think that, you know, we have opportunities here that, you know, telling our story, telling the Dayton Public School story. And if I'm in a community and I'm in the Kaiser neighborhood, I understand this is my neighborhood school, this is where I want my kids to go. But there are a lot of other really wonderful opportunities within Dayton Public Schools. I'm going to use the boys' school as a possibility. And I know some of our families face some hardships with regard to being able to purchase uniforms and it's something that we're talking about as a board where we can open up opportunities for our other families to go to different buildings and just diversify a little bit rather than concentrate. And I think that as a board and as we look into stepping into new agreements with public relations and marketing, we can begin to tell a better story of Dayton Public Schools and open some of our communities' eyes to the other opportunities that exist. So anyway, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other concerns, any questions? Motion on the floor? Are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alham Dani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhart?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gani?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Motion carries. Superintendent?
I requested a few minutes to have conversation with the board. As we prepare for the new school year, I want to alert you to some of the things that are occurring and some of the things we can expect. The first thing that occurred last week was we had a joint meeting. Ms. Reinhart was available to be there and worked with us through the day. We worked with the DEA Executive Leadership Team and some additional teacher leaders and the new curriculum team and the administration, the administrative team, the cabinet essentially, as well as some principals who came in to develop the Dayton Way. What does it look like to be in a Dayton City Schools classroom? What does it look like? What are the things that we believe in? So we've developed those ideas and put those in place. Those will now go out to the committee for review to make sure before we publicize it that that's what, that says everything that we wanted to say about curriculum instruction, about the culture, about those sorts of things. So the work went very well, it was very productive, and concluded with some very strong ideas about what we need to look like and what we need to do. And in addition to that, we need to be prepared for the upcoming release of our test results from this past school year. And I want to make sure that the board understands that the test results likely will not be wonderful test results. We had a very troubled start, as you recall, for several of the organizations that work within the Dayton Public Schools. We faced an imminent teacher's strike and settled just a day before we were supposed to open school. And then we had some additional, some additional contracts and things that were going throughout the year as well as the additional turmoil that occurred throughout the school year until we started to close the year out. With that all being said, I want the Board of Education and the public to understand that the test results that come in in the next few weeks likely are not going to be the best work that you've ever seen produced by our Dayton Public School District team. What I will say to you is that we are committed to using that as our baseline data. So from this point forward, that baseline of test results that we will receive from last year will become what we measure ourselves against as we start to give those monthly reports to the Board of Education about our strategic goals and our strategic actions. So I want to make it clear to you that while we understand that the results are not going to be what we would have wanted or hoped for, those results will be used for us to judge ourselves against ourselves as we move forward in all this work that we've been doing this summer and collectively with the bargaining units to create a more cohesive, more solidified focus on student achievement and on the students that we serve. Thank you.
Board member?
I apologize.
So.
I can yield. You can go ahead.
Thank you.
Board member Reinhart?
Thank you, Board Member Alham Dani. Mr. President, following what Superintendent Lali said, I would like to speak for a few minutes about that. I've been reflecting a lot this year about, this summer, about where we all were last year. Four of us were campaigning quite vigorously for a seat on this board. And we, it was a very competitive campaign, but we had the opportunity to open up some conversations all over the city that I find, that I found highly valuable. I found a level of engagement across the city to be productive. And there were a lot of things that I know in the intense contract negotiations last year with the DEA and things that we talked about on the campaign that I know the community cared very highly about. And in this meeting that I was very privileged to attend, thank you again for that invitation, Dr. Lali, the Dayton Way Committee, I was so excited to see some of the developments that were talked about in the meeting. What they did for the other board members who weren't able to make it, they talked about, they got a group of administrators and building leaders and principals together to talk about in groups and then in a large group about the curriculum that doesn't work in our buildings anymore. And the things that we're hanging on to that don't work, that are encumbrances to teachers, which is something that I've seen for the last couple of years in my involvement in my children's school. And the district-wide implementation of highly valuable programs and curriculum. There were five specific, but three that I would like to highlight. We have a district-wide implementation of PSYOPs training, which focuses especially on ESL learners, but also influences native English speakers. We have more trauma-trained counselors in the schools that recognize where our children come from and the many needs that they have. And we have reopened media centers in many of the elementary schools. And I'm so grateful for, I think, the way that the community really talked about these things and emphasized that these are important to us. And I know that they are important to the teachers as well, who are highly cognizant of the needs of our children and the programs and resources we give them. I was very impressed with the intentional direction of the conversation that we had all day from eight to three. It was, it's normal at this time in the summer to, for teachers to feel like they've rested and they're reinvigorated for a new school year. But the level of excitement that I saw these people talk about in terms of the resources and the curriculum we have in our buildings and the direction that this district is going, it felt, it felt different and I'm very hopeful for that. I'm grateful for the ability that the buildings have with some flexibility in terms of things that they need, specific buildings that they need that maybe not all the other buildings have. And I was again grateful for the opportunity to do that. I've gotten some blowback from some of my children about the time that I spend in meetings, but I'm grateful for the opportunity that I have to see the direction that we have going in this district. And I am grateful for the superintendent and for the administrators and all the people that were in that room over there at that meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Board Member Reinhart. Thank you.
Can I get some time back?
Board Member Alham Dani?
Thank you, Mr. President. So you said we had a tough year last year, huh? It was. I want to thank you for being honest. It's refreshing for a superintendent to stand up here and actually tell us we had a tough year last year, that it wasn't going to look as good as you want it to be. But I'm also glad that you're committing for it to be our baseline for the future. That's important because we expect better of ourselves and we expect better of this district our students, our scholars can achieve. So I look forward to setting those goals along with you. And thank you for committing to giving us monthly reports as to where we are. That's very, very refreshing to hear. And we'll be holding your feet to the fire. I hope you know that, right? You said that earlier today? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other board members would like to comment?
If I may?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Lali. I love the idea, the concept of the Dayton Way. As I've stated before, I think a lot of the issues around our performance within Dayton Public School is a result of organizational culture. And I believe that establishing some baselines of expectations and performance in establishing a Dayton Way model will go a long way towards rebuilding that organizational culture. And I believe with some of the new administrative appointments that you've made, we look at Aaron Dooley as being a leader of our high schools and we have continued great guidance there. I think that we're going to see some great improvement, so I really appreciate that. And I think that it will go a long way towards building the culture that we need to achieve academic achievement and performance, which guides everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Walker?
Thank you, President Harris. In talking about those things that are moving forward for this year, I want to, I think that there's a notable sense of improvement in morale in the district. And I want to commend the superintendent and her staff and all who've had a part of that, especially how you've given attention to the salaries, increasing salaries and wages in the district. However, I want to ask if we have a livable, have we made a commitment to a livable wage? I'm embarrassed, I must say, with some of the professions or work areas in our district. And I hope that we will commit as a district to paying our people a livable wage.
Yes, sir.
Because some of these people who are at some of these, some of these wages have children in this district, which put them on public assistance.
That's right. That is right.
And I think that there are some things, I think that as we work to improve the district, we also have to improve our commitment to those at the bottom and those on the edge. So as we do all of these good things, and I think that there's a simple solution, even in our classroom, as we increase those, as we enhance and empower those at the bottom, we impact the whole district. So I would encourage us to really look at a livable wage, Mr. President, committing to a livable wage in this district.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. Any other concerns, board members? All right. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Sure.
It just kind of felt like that fell on deaf ears. How do we get some movement on that? Because I don't want to leave that here tonight and we don't come back to it.
Well, Superintendent, I would like to ask you to certainly look at that matter of livable wages and see how we could come to some agreement along with the treasurer to work toward equity in our district. I'll challenge you to...
I would agree. I mean, if we are to be a beacon of, for this community, you know, committing to a living wage in Dayton, it's not that high. I was surprised to hear that there are folks making eight dollars an hour for us. That cannot happen. That should not happen. People cannot live off of that. It's just, that broke my heart, so. I agree.
Sure. Thank you for bringing that issue forward. Yes. Board Member Taylor?
Maybe we could kind of set it up so that we have ongoing conversation because this also has to do with union contracts and that maybe, maybe we could have ongoing conversation in terms of what we want to see in our next contracts, so it's not like at the last minute. You know, I'm not talking about, you know, making it a major issue right now, but just keeping it, just to make sure that it stays on the table. And I know Dr. Walker and I both were very much in support of these ideas before, especially when it, well, and Board Member McManus, that was a real major issue with transportation when some of the board members found out how much those drivers made. You know, so I agree, you know, that, you know, it's a conversation maybe that we should have early and start looking at it instead of waiting. Because, well, we still have two years or so to go for the next, but not with teachers.
Sure.
How long is teachers? But still to start looking at that and budgeting, you know, and looking how that would be budgeting in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other comments we'd like to make this evening?
I have one more item, Mr. President. Quickly, I wasn't sure if you were going to mention this at all, but you and I attended a very good discussion today and it's going on tomorrow, a discussion about equity. And it was very well facilitated and I am grateful that we have these public conversations about equity versus equality and systems that DPS works within, changing systems, recognizing where systems come from. I don't know if you would like to speak to that at all, but I know that you and I both had a very good experience today and we're very grateful for that being put together.
Absolutely. Thank you, Board Member Reinhart, and I concur that I think it was very beneficial, the engagement today and tomorrow that would take place. I think it's critical for our district, for all of our DPS personnel, staff, administrators, teachers, everybody involved to have a sensitivity to each student and their perspective, where they come from. So I was encouraged, very much encouraged by the opportunity to share. And again, we thank Dr. Lali and the staff for putting that in place to get us all pointing in the same direction. So thank you so much. Any other comments this evening? All right. Hearing none pursuant to Section 121 dot 22 G2 of the Highway Revise Code, I move that this board go into executive session. This meeting is being held to consider the employment, appointment, discipline, promotion, compensation, dismissal, or demotion of a public employee and to confer with an attorney for the Board of Education concerning disputes involving the board that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. Is there a second?
So moved.
Properly moved and second, any question? Hearing none, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alham Dani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhart?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor? Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gani?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you. Motion carries. Let us move into executive session.